As a county, over the past several years, we've built momentum in the fight against homelessness. We've invested more than $320 million in the Homelessness Action Plan, resulting from the increased collaboration and coordination across many county agencies focused on this important issue. With Measure A1-Bond, the county is committing $8 million dollars to address critical housing needs. And through our Health Care Services program, it's a care plan. We've invested in homeless services and supports for medically complex people. We've invested in the capacity building of our CEO partners. And we have created the shared database that Dr. Tan had just described. And despite all this being done by the county, by cities and CEOs, this problem is too big for any one entity to handle alone. And our collective practical experience and system analysis highlights persistent challenges in our homelessness system of care, including inadequate funding for services and administrative infrastructure, fragmented authorities, responsibilities, and goals for services and programming, the silos that are caused by restricted or narrow funding streams, and service gaps for the most vulnerable individuals. All of these things point to a need for improved coordination and alignment. Aligned with the Vision 2026 goal of eliminating homelessness, the Healthcare Services Agency is proposing a new office within the Office of the Agency Director. To achieve any meaningful reductions in homelessness, we need to sustain and better coordinate our partnerships and make investments in focused service expansions. Our vision includes all entities working to their highest potential so that homeless people receive the most responsive, effective, and coordinated services possible. Our commitment is to scale and align homeless services within our own agency and to strengthen coordination with county agencies, cities, and community-based organizations. Our Office of Homeless Care and Coordination would be the single triage point of contact for the county. We would be focused on coordination of care and services, working with our partners to align our respective areas of responsibility, authority, and ability. And our hope is that investing in this infrastructure early prepares us to make the most efficient use of future resources that may result from a potential valid initiative to come.
I ask, Colleen, this sounds real great. Who's the coordinator? Who's the person?
That is coming.
Staff's a single triage point of contact. Who's that person?
That's coming. Can I get to the... There's a big reveal again.
Oh, okay.
So, Healthcare Services has also been a position to take this role on. Healthcare Services represents a significant portion of the county investment into homelessness, some of which I referenced earlier. And we have strengths in our own system that we can leverage to realize the vision of a robust and integrated system of care. As I mentioned already, our AC3 experience, this was $140 million, five-year investment in Medi-Cal beneficiaries who are high users of health services or homeless, and included the creation of a community health sector, housing resource centers, and an expansion of outreach. So what I'm proposing is a two-part strategy. The first is investment in infrastructure, and the second are focused service expansions. So the investment in infrastructure, for this, I'm requesting the addition of eight new staff. Three of these staff would be specifically dedicated to outreach coordination and client flow through the system to ensure that clients have access to the services they need and limited housing and service resources are maximized. The cost of these staff would be approximately $1.4 million annually. And the second prong is a focused service expansion. In order to address our increased needs of our unsheltered population, we're also proposing to focus additional dollars to expand outreach and services to unsheltered homelessness. In my conversations with the County Administrator's Office, we believe that funding for this proposal would be available within the funding already allocated to homeless services by your board. I've got more information on each of these two strategies briefly. Regarding investment in infrastructure, Healthcare Services already has much of the PR components to the county's homeless response and is proposing to bolster our planning and coordination functions by this new infrastructure request. The eight additional staff that HCSA is requesting would be responsible for coordinating a strategic plan to guide the county's investments in services and supports, facilitating partnerships with the cities, enhancing the county's role in the continuum of care and coordinated entry, improving the client experience and flow from outreach to interim housing to permanent housing, supporting county-wide collaboration in areas of governance, policy development, and data sharing, and implementing the sustainable aspects of the AC Care Connect pilot. Our goal is that investing in this infrastructure and early prepares us to better show the impact of county and coordinated investments in homelessness to make the most efficient use of future resources that may result from a valid initiative to come. With regard to the focused service expansions, in addition to the infrastructure investment, we want to continue our efforts to address the gaps in our systems of care in alignment with the Homelessness Action Plan and as prioritized by your board. For the focused service expansion, HCSA is requesting $5.5 million annually to continue the development of a coordinated county-wide street health outreach system and to expand interim housing options that would be a resource for those outreach teams. Additionally, we recommend wraparound services for individuals that are already living in county-supported health facilities to keep them in that housing event. I want to say that I've already begun this important work by hiring Carrie Abbott, who is here with us today. Carrie Abbott, very good to meet you. Carrie Abbott comes to us much recently from San Francisco. She was the Deputy Director of the Department of Homeless Systems, supportive housing in San Francisco, Deputy Director for Programs. She was that department's inaugural person in that convention, so she had a big role in standing up new and creating new structures for coordinating and influencing homeless communities. And she also has connections here in Alameda County. She's now a county resident and also has done consulting with many of our homeless service partners. I'm really excited about Carrie coming on with us. And as spectacular as she is, she cannot do this alone. And so I am requesting your board support for the resources that are required to establish this office within the Office of Healthcare Services.
So, Colleen, Carrie?
Carrie, yeah.
Does she have her business cards and her email and phone number? Can we post it?
I'd like you to say today is Carrie's very first day.
Okay, so she's got her email and phone number. We want to get that out to the world, that that's our single point of contact. And then with this office, with this office, will they have some performance measures? Because, you know, once again, we don't want to be throwing money at a problem and not getting results. I think this is a good direction to go in, to see results, and what the performance measures are.
That is the focus of the office's two measures. So continuing on, the next section is related to outreach. I'll turn this over to Supervisor Carson.
Thank you very... Thank you very much, and I'm pretty excited about what they propose. And I want to say thanks for all the hard work. And welcome to our next executive director, who's overseeing homeless in Alameda County. Welcome. We've talked about this with the board, and I'm going to be very brief because I know that Supervisor Mindy also wants to focus on an area that he has responsibility for and is passionate about. We clearly know that in order to solve the homeless problem, we've got to have housing, we've got to have a place to stay. And everybody acknowledges the fact that that is, while in many cases it's the city jurisdiction to oversee planning and land use, that working collaboratively, that still means that it's a year, three, five-year process for people to actually find housing, and we know that. And we can only assume responsibility for the unincorporated area where we've laid out a pretty comprehensive plan on how we address that. But we're all in communication with a number of council people, as well as mayors throughout Alameda County around the actual housing element. And on top of that, the Measure 1A monies that we've been dispersing to affordable housing developers is another part of our contribution on that. But while we're dealing with that, we really know that we have additional statutory responsibility for dealing with the health, safety, and welfare of people. And that means a coordinated approach to that. And that means really having great street outreach plan to address the homeless issue. One of the responsibilities that the board gave me, and I assume as we talked about homelessness, was with respect to our outreach plan. Let me say, as we kind of got to this point today, that our office has had several meetings directly with a cross-section of community-based providers that deal with outreach directly throughout the county, not just in North County, but South County as well. We've had additional one-on-ones to kind of get a sense of how to refine it and how to approach it even more in a better way based on things. And we're working through another phase of that with the cross-section of our community-based providers. We know that street outreach should be strategic. It should be organized and focused on helping people to obtain permanent housing as quickly as possible. And obviously, I think through the structure that was laid out here in terms of being able to follow individuals across that, share that information, not only with departments but with other entities that can help in achieving housing, that we are getting close to a strategic plan, an organized plan, helping people to deal with housing as possible. The other element, let me just reference this real quickly on the housing part. We also understand that during this period, which it takes a year to three to five years with the planning process, and hear from neighbors that say, "No, not in my backyard," that we really need to focus a lot of our monies and our energy also on keeping people in their homes, maximizing the use of existing structures, not new structures, in order to maximize people there, including subsidies for individuals who would help to house individuals there and over and above the housing authorities' responsibilities. And so we want to make sure that we also, as we put our teams throughout Alameda County in a coordinated way, in a regular routine way, keeping data and following up on how that data has manifested itself in terms of outcomes and things that will lead the board constantly raise and Supervisor Mindy always raise in terms of outcome and data gathering, that we're able to do that. So we're going to have to have sufficient outreach approach. We're going to have to have sufficient staffing around that outreach approach. And that's one of the things that we're attempting to get to at this point in time. That is one of our efforts that we're going to be looking at. We also are going to have to go back and look at how we address those who are fully unsheltered and those who are living in their vehicles. Those are two different kinds of strategies. It's not necessarily the same strategy in terms of addressing the homeless challenge in that way and trying to better understand that and analyze that and keep that on that is a critical part of that. We're going to deal with our street outreach by zones and coordinating with each of the jurisdictions in terms of the zones that we're going to attempt to work in. And we're going to make sure that the skill set that goes out to interact on a regular basis in a known time, date, place, location, that there's a high-quality requisite skill set and that we provide the best professional services to individuals who need those that are there. And then clearly, we're going to have to tie that in on constantly nudging, working to get people into the housing-first approach that's there. I'm going to kind of share my presentation, other than with the stories that are here, with kind of some of the next steps, and then I'll wrap it up real quick.
Thank you. I know that we are running short on time, so I'll share quickly the story of John. In the winter of 2018, Street Health met John behind St. Vincent de Paul in Oakland. John was in a wheelchair and slowly wheeling himself towards his tent when staff approached him. John suffered from a traumatic brain injury resulting in mood swings, difficulty sleeping, depression, and mobility issues. John also had untreated high blood pressure. Over several weeks, staff visited John twice a week. In time, trust was built and he engaged in care. With staff's support, he was hospitalized due to treatment, untreated medical conditions. He transitioned into medical respite and was referred to East Bay Innovations for housing and care management support. After several weeks, EDI moved him into a licensed supportive care subsidized by the Healthcare Services Agency's Care Connect funds. Nearly a year later, John remains actively engaged with EDI and is enjoying his new life. He hopes his next chapter will include reconnecting with family now that he has housing and is receiving the care that he needs. That is one example of the importance of street outreach and appropriating health into the program model. Healthcare Service Agency's Street Health Program is one that our board has heard very much about. Pursuant to your board's direction, we have recently enhanced our outreach teams to add clinician time as a resource to ensure that the most medically fragile have access to health care and treatment services at their own front door. In addition to providing medical care, our street health teams are focused on client engagement, connection to needed services and supports, and problem-solving. Our teams have a regular predictable outreach schedule, and we need results-based accountability to drive continuous improvements in the system. The goals of the teams are to remove barriers to health services, prevent deterioration of health status, reduce the utilization of healthcare crisis services, increase housing stability, and ensure that clients are enrolled in a public benefit for which they are eligible. Supervisor Carson noted, we divide the county into zones. We use a 2019 point in time count on unsheltered homelessness to divide the county into 14 zones. There are approximately 500 unsheltered individuals per zone. Currently, with the investments in outreach that we have, seven zones are covered, resulting in staffing ratios about 1 to 140, higher than the 1 to 100 ratio that is ideal. This shows the evolution of our street medicine service delivery model. In 2015, our first street medicine services in Alameda County were assigned by region. We had two providers, Roots and Trey City, serving Oakland by Roots and Central, East, and South County by Trey City. This year, we had a Phase 1 expansion with the enhanced service delivery model that I just described. And we are expanding to seven zones total. In early 2020, we anticipate expanding to three additional zones, leaving seven zones, sorry, four zones uncovered at the end of this expansion. And that is shown in the next two maps. So this map shows the yellow are where our teams now, not green, but the green is where our teams are now, and the yellow is what is the three that are planned by 2020. The dark gray are those that are not yet planned for but focused on the potential expansion that we're here to discuss today. This is a zoom in on the North County since the zones here are smaller because the density of the unsheltered homeless population is greater in these zones. This is a photo of the vests that are healthcare for the homeless outreach staff currently wear. And we will be expanding the distribution of these vests to all of our partners in healthcare outreach. The goal is to let folks know that we are here for them and here to help them and outreach to individuals who are unsheltered across the county, that we are recognizable and here to help. This is the three-year outreach budget that we have regarding our current and planned and potential new teams. So we will see here that the annual cost for covering the entire county would be approximately $6.4 million. That would be the cost for 1 to 100 ratio of outreach teams in 14 zones across the county. Currently, we have our seven existing teams that are just shy of $3 million, and we have ongoing funding sources for them. They're funded through the Healthcare for the Homeless program as well as indigent care funding that comes through the Healthcare Services Agency. The three new teams that are being implemented in the beginning of 2020 at a cost of approximately $1.5 million are being funded in the through our Care Connect program, through a partnership of BART, and through the unincorporated area three-year homelessness plan. Those are one-time funds that take us through the end of this fiscal year. And ongoing funding for those is not yet identified. And then there are four additional teams that would be required for full county-wide coverage. And these funding sources are not going to be identified for this purpose. It is possible that there are, at the direction of your board, we could look into existing funding sources that have already been allocated for homelessness by your board to determine these funding requirements. So to reach more unhoused individuals, improve coordination, it's essential that there are regional leads who have in-depth knowledge of the population, resources, and partners. And the Office of Homeless Care and Coordination proposal that you heard from me just a few moments ago identified that there were three positions that were focused on outreach coordination and client flow. And this would bring us to coordination across all five districts in the county and all 14 zones in the county. And also that the Homeless Care and Coordination proposal identified focused service expansions as a second part of that proposal. And that pairs with this outreach expansion proposal that would provide these outreach teams with immediately available resources for interim housing and service events.
Yeah, I want to thank the Healthcare Agency Director and your staff for the extensive overview that they've given us today. But I want to conclude on the main point of this program, this portion of the program. It's to remove barriers to health care services for unhoused Alameda County residents. It's to prevent deterioration of physical and behavioral health. It's also the reduction in appropriate utilization of emergency outpatient and crisis healthcare services. It's also to house the stability through partnership and collaboration with community-based organizations. And it's also to increase the income and resources through benefits enrollment and support of disability cases. We figure that that is our statutory responsibility anyway. And so working with the various cities by way of the zone and having these ongoing street teams out there is a major part of our contribution in the area of providing the services to get people to become self-sufficient and back on their feet. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Supervisor Mindy.
Thank you. Yeah, this looks great. It looks like we might be about at a place where we're turning the corner and really begin to see some changes out there, maybe. Because I'm really pleased to hear some of the stuff we're pondering and implementing. My team, my staff, Erin and Sarah and Asa have been working with advocates and providers, Caltrans, other entities. So we can figure out an approach, the board asked, we can figure out an approach to encampment, maintenance, and cleanup. And we've talked to Joe de Fries over at the city as well. And so I think, Erin, you're going to do this presentation. But, you know, we want to get people housed, but if they're living in encampments, that's their community at the moment. We want to try to make these communities as safe and respectful as possible while they're there. And so we put together a pilot that we'd like to see if the board would approve in each of the five supervisory districts. And, you know, I'm particularly concerned about this because many of the folks who are homeless are older adults, and I have a real passion for older adults. Many of the folks who are homeless are males, and many of the folks who are homeless are African-American. So we, African-American males who are older adults. I mean, that's a shame. It's a shame for anybody to be unsheltered. So if folks are unsheltered in these encampments, we want to figure out how we can best accommodate them in terms of making the encampments as clean and respectful as possible. So let's go with it.
Thank you, Supervisor. And so as the supervisor mentioned, I just want to be very clear about the scope of what we're looking at here today. We are presenting a pilot on encampment sanitation. And that involves two specific elements. The first element is garbage removal. There should be slide presentation if not. There was, I'm told that there was not, but there have been physical copies passed down. So there are two main elements of it. So the first is garbage. We know that garbage is piling up, and we need to address that through regular garbage service. We also know that there are excessive needles that are coming onto our streets through these encampments. So we need needle collection as well as pest control and removal. And we know that if we do all of those, that we will achieve cleaner encampments. The second element of sanitation is on hygiene. And this is specifically around showers, laundry, and bathrooms. So that's bathrooms and hand-washing stations specifically. We know that if we're able to provide these three elements, that will increase personal hygiene and increase public health at homeless encampments. So the abstract for our pilot proposal, the main points that we're talking about. First off, each supervisor would be responsible for selecting homeless encampment within their district that would receive these pilot services. There are six specific services that we're proposing to be included in the pilot. The first is weekly hygiene services focusing on showers and laundry. The second is on weekly garbage pickup and removal. The third is on one HEPA, that's our needle exchange. They would have a disposal and exchange kiosk focused on education as well as a needle exchange on-site. The fourth would be on-site porta-potties as well as a hand-washing station. We know that that's effective at reducing the spread of germs. The fifth would be regular visits by healthcare outreach providers, specifically our street medicine teams. And the sixth would be pest control services through our vector control division. Overall, that's what we're talking about. On the next page of the presentation, you can see some sample recommendations for what this would look like if it were to come into a board letter. Essentially, we're proposing to develop a hygiene RFP or other funding method to provide the following services at pilot encampments: showers, laundry, bathrooms, and fresh water. We'd also like to develop a garbage removal RFP or other funding method to provide garbage services at pilot encampment sites. We'd also like to expand the HEPA contract to include needle collection and disposal at pilot encampment sites, as well as establish a pilot administration and leadership structure. In addition to this pilot, though, we recommend that the county establish a separate and concurrent county strategy focused on RV parking, especially in urban areas, that would focus specifically on the improper disposal of black water and garbage associated with RVs. So how do we come up with this proposal? So initially, we received direction from the Board of Supervisors in February that the supervisor should leverage his experience working on illegal dumping and reducing that to bring that to bear on encampment sanitation. The supervisor convened a stakeholders group that meant to discuss the issue. And from that, we reported back to the Board of Supervisors at a retreat this summer. We received feedback on our proposal and brought that back to our stakeholders group. From that stakeholders group, we developed a pilot development subcommittee that was tasked specifically with developing this pilot proposal. That stakeholder group met three times specifically with the goals of defining and refining the pilot and identifying interventions and costs. Now we're here today with a pilot proposal. For the selection of each pilot encampment site, as I mentioned, each board office... Hey, there it is. Each board office selects a pilot encampment site. So our goal here is to identify five encampment locations representing a diversity of encampments and community types. So we're really looking to stress test this pilot across different areas of the county. We're looking at urban, suburban, and rural very specifically. There are five, sorry, four recommended criteria for site selections. The first is that each encampment selected should have more than 15 residents. The reason for that is that when we have discussed this pilot proposal with providers of showers, that's the minimum that they would need at an encampment in order to make that service effective. So it shouldn't have more than 15 residents. It should have known vector or hygiene issues. It should have excessive or visible garbage accumulation. And it should have inadequate services to address those issues. The timeline that we're proposing for this may be ambitious, but I'm hoping that we can stick to it because the scale of the problem demands it. So in quarter four 2019, where we're at now, we would hope to establish the RFPs, allocate funding, establish the management structure, and identify the five sites. Starting in quarter one 2020, we would develop site-specific plans for each of those sites about how those services can be delivered, award the RFP contracts, and do a pre-pilot assessment at each of the sites. assessment at each of the sites, and then launch the pilot. From quarter two, 2020, through quarter one, 2021, we would operate the pilot while monitoring our performance indicators. And in quarter two, 2021, we would evaluate the pilot and expand the pilot using the lessons learned from that year. Our proposed budget for, or our estimated budget, I'll say, for the pilot includes a breakdown in several different areas. The first is hygiene, garbage, HEPEC, porta-potties, as well as miscellaneous costs associated with running the program. Overall, you can see the breakdown here of the cost for each of the services, the frequency at which they would be delivered, as well as the total yearly cost for each of those services. And our estimate, we could get this done for one point six million dollars. When we break that down on an average encampment of twenty-five people, you can see that it comes down to about eighteen dollars and seven cents per encampment resident per day. So metrics, we want to know if we're spending this money, what are we getting? The supervisor's always good at hammering in on metrics and numbers. So we want to measure our metrics across two main areas. The first is our levels of impact, and we're looking at three different categories. The first is on institutional. How is the city and all the cities in the county and the county working together? And is this improving or increasing as a result of the pilot? We want to look at community-level impacts, that's before and after, doing a before-and-after survey of encampment residents, but also nearby communities. And we also want to look at the individual impacts. So what's the personal hygiene impact, so case management and service delivery results for those individuals who are living within the encampments? There's also the contract deliverables that we would want to look at. Specifically with hygiene, we want to look at the number of sessions that are delivered, the number of individual services, the number of showers, the number of loads of laundry. With garbage, the number of cleanups, the tons of waste that have been removed. And with needles, the numbers of sharps containers distributed, as well as the number of sharps removed. On the next slide, we put together a proposed pilot structure that breaks responsibilities down across three main areas: finance and contracting, operations, as well as service delivery. Each of, and we proposed what that could look like. So on the administration team responsible for finance and contract, that would be made up of county supervisors and department heads. They'd be responsible for governance, funding and procurement, big-picture collaboration, and reviewing and assessing the pilot data. At the coordination level, responsible for operations, we would have agency managers, community organizations, as well as site leaders. And they would be responsible for case conferencing, troubleshooting, working directly with community partners to implement the pilot interventions. And they would also be collecting and assessing and reporting on the data from all of the sites up to the administration team. At the site level, which is responsible for the service delivery, which would be made up of service providers as well as camp residents, that's really key, I just want to drive this home really quickly, we have to be involving the encampment residents in anything that we're doing here. Because without that buy-in, we're not going to be effective, so that has to be key. So they would be responsible for operating the individual pilot sites, working directly with camp residents, collecting onsite data on those pilot deliverables that I just mentioned, and reporting directly to the coordination team. So this is our proposed structure for what that can look like. For the next steps, so we know that this is a pilot and the scale, the problem demands a large solution. Cleaning up five encampment sites isn't going to fix that, but it's going to tell us what we can do, what's working and what's not. And so for next steps, what we want to do is identify the lessons learned from this pilot. What worked? What didn't work? How can we improve our efficacy in this area? We want to use those lessons learned to expand the pilot. We want to expand what works and cut back on what doesn't, and then scale up the pilot to include many more locations. I'm just going to throw out fifty as an example. And then we want to institutionalize the pilot. So we need to identify the best location for this pilot to reside, or a program at that point, within the county structure, and scale it up to meet the needs of the community and of the problem. Just as FYI, we've included a logic model at the end, so really nerdy and policy-oriented, like many of our staff are, if you can dig into this, but that's really our pilot proposal.
And so for a modest investment of one point six million dollars, we can launch this pilot in encampment cleanup in each supervisory district. You know, I'd love to jump on that encampment over at Home Depot. That's not my district, that's a very chance district. But yeah, so we can launch this. And the thing is, we don't think, even though Erin said we want to scale this up to maybe fifty encampments, the hope is as, we're comprehensively addressing the homeless crisis and the unsheltered, the number of encampments is going to diminish. That's the hope. And the work here will diminish as well, but we want to get this geared up so we can try to get on top of addressing the needs of the encampments right now. And then the other thing is, this would happen possibly over two fiscal years. Well, we're in one fiscal year now, but fiscal year 2021 and then fiscal year 2122. So give the board a sense of that. So I see some questions. Erin, you might need to come back up here. And I just want to acknowledge Sarah back there and Asa are working with this, preparing for my staff, and then, like I said, the board. To meet the stakeholders group was Caltrans, HEPEC, other advocates and providers, the county staff, et cetera. We had a few more people working on this. So let's see, questions?
I guess the main question I have is depending where we do these, I'm in support of the pilot generally, but I think we're going to have to have MOUs or agreements with the cities because, like Supervisor Carson, I mean, Mom, they just mentioned the Home Depot site, and I know the city cleaned it yesterday. Yeah. So we have to come to some agreement. If we all, if three of us picked sites in Oakland, we'd sit down with them. You know, if we picked a site that, hey, we'd have to sit down with them. So I think there needs to be a step to develop that agreement.
So Erin, I, you know, I think this is great work. I think today in general has been, shows that there's been a lot of movement forward, but it seems like in our districts, we're each going to codify a homeless encampment, and we're going to keep it a clean door. One thing that I don't see is food. When some of these, when somebody comes out, could there be like box lunches or something that's piled up to at some time? It just seems like it's good to look good, but if you're hungry, you're still hungry, and that affects your health, especially if you have diabetes.
So I agree. I think that's a wonderful idea and suggestion. We'd be very happy to incorporate that, as well as the MOU process that would be required. The reason that we didn't include that Supervisor Haggerty is that we're very focused on that narrow scope of that hygiene. But you're right, this is a great opportunity for direct interaction with these encampments, and we can maximize what we're doing during that time, including doing the.
Yeah, I would add to that list, the encampments that I've visited in my district. First of all, they're very isolated, hard to get to, in creeks, along railroads, right aways, there's a lot. And the population that goes is four to five people. That would be a challenge for my district. The other item is, the need that I hear from people in those encampments right now is food, water, bungee cords, and tarts because of the kind of rain, the wind, et cetera. A lot of their tarts are falling to pieces, and they need tarts and bungee cords as well. So I think there should be some supplies.
I can add a rumble there.
And I think those are, because this, this has been put together, but obviously it's powerful, you know, can be molded to fit the certain patches. Because in District Two, if there aren't those types of encampments, and we need to try to look at another approach to maintenance, we can do that. But I know in my district, Keith's district, Lou's district, you know, we've got some significant encampments, and maybe in your district, Supervisor Haggerty's district, maybe it might look a little differently. But yeah, I think it's, you know, it's definitely flexible in terms of how we go about this. And the other thing, I think is important, that with the encampments, a lot of the, I think everyone in this room would not disagree with me, hopefully, the debris and the sanitation and the problems that we find at the encampments when it comes to hygiene is not necessarily the fault of those folks who are at the encampment. It's the fault of people who have good intentions, bringing food, bringing clothes, bringing furniture, bringing all sorts of stuff to encampments, and then the folks who are unsheltered, either when they move on or not knowing what to do with it, it piles up and becomes debris, whether it's trash, garbage, clothing, et cetera, et cetera. So I think Supervisor Baye's comment was a good one. We want to try to get a message out, and this, and we could possibly try to integrate that into this model too. We want to try to get a message out to people who are good intentions, whether they're individuals, the faith community, community-based organizations, businesses, et cetera. If you want to help folks who are unsheltered, direct your help in these avenues. Send your resources here, bring your food there. There are providers and others who can accommodate the unsheltered in a way that's not going to produce more problems at that encampment. And I think that's the important thing we want to try to get at as well, to let folks of good intentions know where they can take their resources, their ideas, things of that nature. And I think that's going to be really good now that we've got that coordinator on board too. I can see there's going to be a lot of synergy working with her on a lot of stuff, because we're going to be running a lot of this stuff up through the coordinator probably. Other questions? So I don't know what the next step would be on this, but we've laid it out, so we just need the board to give us the authorization to take the next steps.
Is there one more presentation?
So the final piece of the presentation today relates to follow-up from the joint meeting with the mayors across the county. And the Board of Supervisors and the county mayors met directly on July 22nd. Since that time, the mayors have formed a working group to work with the county on homelessness issues. They transmitted the names of the mayors in that working group, or they appear here, they transited on to pretend. And a follow-up city-county meeting will be scheduled in late November or early December.
Yeah, I think we're all circling progress in terms of working with the mayors. We also did a tour of the jail. I don't think that's probably going to be an option, but we did allow the mayors, I think twelve of them came, and President Baye was there with me, and we walked through it. And I think we all have a common interest in two things. One is finding immediate relief for unsheltered populations, but with an exit strategy to permanent housing. So I think that's what we're going to be taking up when we have this follow-up meeting in November or December.
And so just the very last item on our agenda for homelessness today is related to a public credit partnership with Kaiser, a pilot. So Kaiser and City of Oakland and Alameda County have been talking together about ways we can work in more collaboration to reduce homelessness and implement systems change to affect collaboration, to strengthen effective collaboration. And the idea Kaiser's interest is to invest in systems change in the way we work together to have enduring effects for addressing homelessness. So I know that Kaiser is still working on its final scope, but it's going to continue to work with us and the City of Oakland to create.
Sorry, there is one other thing under homelessness today. If we could hand this information out. Erin, we've got about twenty-five copies there. My office has also been working with Oakland Unified School District, so we're looking to see how we can utilize school district property as possibly a location to build affordable housing. So we're looking to pull together a symposium to talk about that. So I think that needs to be factored into some of our strategies going forward, because we're looking for work or appropriate housing for teachers, first responders, et cetera, public sector employees, CBO employees, et cetera. So that's another piece that we've started to work with, and I think some of that's coming out of youth interest as well, but that's, that's another component that we need to put on our radar.
On the Kaiser partnership, this could be very valuable to the county, particularly the City of Oakland. You know, Kaiser has invested a lot of dollars in homelessness, and they're particularly interested in Alameda County and the city working together. But they did conclude their successful pilot for seeing vulnerable seniors, I don't know if you know that, that they were able to house, I think it was three hundred, is it three hundred? Five hundred, yeah. Five hundred seniors, and they mainly did it through the BACS model. Seventy percent of the people were housed in houses bought by BACS, and where they put, they're buying three-bedroom houses and able to house maybe five people there. And this is permanent housing for them. They work with the, they work with the banks, and they have a model for this. And so that was the first year Kaiser funded that. And they're looking to, how they want to spend dollars for the second year. It could include continuing that, it could include something that we come up with with the mayors on immediate, you know, immediate housing, but with an exit strategy. No one wants to just put people somewhere with no exit strategy. And it also would likely include strong support for the ballot initiative. As you saw on Supervisor Carson's report, the second and third years to be determined, and even for the sanitation, these are things that, as I said, because a lot of our money is categorical or linked to specific populations, it's very hard to find general operational things. Because, you know, it's kind of like the school district, when a kid's money, because I was on the school board before, that money can only go to the kids who are in that program, right? Which is kind of ridiculous because, you know, when you're looking at the whole school, but this is the way the homeless money, most of it, that we have too. If we went into an encampment and healthcare wanted to do something, they could only do it for those people who are Medi-Cal, because it's part of the Medi-Cal waiver. The other people, we'd have to come up with general fund money to deal with it, and we have, but I'm just saying there's not, that's not a huge amount. Most of our money is more or less capital for that sense.
Public speakers, do me a favor, as I call your name, come up.